Call to order, please. Welcome to the Dana Point Commission Special Meeting for December 3rd, 2018. And we would introduce ourselves, but I think you can read those across the table here. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be led by Commissioner Scott McCon. Please proceed. Moving on to roll call, Lauren, will you please provide the roll call?
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the Planning Commission?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
And I would second that motion.
All right. Thank you very much. That is done. Item number one. Oh, we gotta take, I'm sorry. I'm in a different spot. I can't think straight. Okay. Do we have, as for going back to approval of the minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Moving on to item one, minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting of November 26, 2018. Now, we're, yes. Now we are moving on to public comments, which I would surmise many of you are here and anxious to be a part of that. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comments section or on an agenda item is asked to complete a request to speak form available at the door. The completed form is to be submitted to the Planning Commission Secretary prior to an individual being heard by the Planning Commission. Any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on a subject other than those scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so at this time. In order to conduct a timely meeting, there will be three-minute time limits per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for the public comments portion of the agenda. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. All right. Moving to the consent caller, there are no items on consent.
Do we have any requests to speak on public comments? Yeah, don't they do that right now?
Okay. All right. We'll go back.
Lauren, do we have any requests to speak on public comments?
We do not.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Yes. All right. So we're moving to item two, conditional use permit, CUP 18-0004-site development permit, SDP 18-0010, for the demolition of a 15,733 square feet of parish hall and meeting rooms and construction of a new 25,393-square-foot pastoral center. 1,803 North X entry into the existing church and walls visible from the public right-of-way greater than 30 inches tall for St. Edward's Cat, I'm sorry, St. Edward's Catholic Church within the community facilities, zoning district located at 33926 Calle La Primavera. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Shawn Nicholas, project planner. This is the conditional use permit and site development permit associated with the St. Edward's Pastoral Center in North X. I know everyone here is probably very familiar with the site, but it is located, as was stated, within the community facilities, zoning district where religious uses are conditionally permitted. The site has been operating as a religious use and approves as such since 1970 with the first mass occurring in 1971 on-site, and it's continued to operate as such since that time. The evolution, the site has continued to evolve over the years, adding a school, a rectory, and then ultimately a new sanctuary. Also throughout the course of time, there was, the rectory was moved off-site and that area was then converted to office use, and the school did receive an expansion in the early 2000s. The application before us this evening is for the consolidation of church operations, is to remove 15,733 square feet of existing meeting space and office space and storage on-site in developing with a new pastoral center and North X entry into the sanctuary. So here is, just to orient again, the existing, the existing center. I'm not sure if the laser will make it all the way. It does not. So you can see there the existing Knights Hall, which is, as I'm sure everyone in here is familiar with, closest to Calle La Primavera in the existing rectory and which has been converted since, since to offices for the past 10 years, and then the office and meeting rooms there that are located in front of the sanctuary that were constructed in the early 1990s. You can see here as shown that the very colorful boxes that have appeared are the portions of the buildings that, on-site, that will now be demolished associated with this project set, with this proposal, and ultimately lead to the new site plan that is shown there. The dark gray is the new buildings proposed, and you can still see outlined on the screen there, the existing buildings. You can see in comparison the footprint of those structures. A few other things I want to highlight here on the site plan in terms of modifications. Shown near the entrance of the may, the ingress, vehicular ingress into the site, there is a pedestrian crossing associated with the accessible path of travel from the right-of-way. There is a condition of approval which will move that further in, close to the existing center aisle there to accommodate and better allow for, oh, thank you, to allow for better circulation of the site. And then you can see along the frontage here, and I apologize for my hand shaking from this far away, along this path here is the main ingress, as everyone I'm sure is familiar with, with the site. Along that frontage, the applicant is proposing to remove 12 parking spaces along that frontage. The goal there is to remove potential conflicts with people backing out of those spaces, and with that space is created about a 93-foot, where I'm trying to circle without too much shaking, 93-foot drop-off area in front of the sanctuary so people can go, drop off potentially elderly parishioners and/or young children to go into the church while then able to get out of the main path of ingress, and the church is hoping that this will improve the overall ingress and speed of ingress into the site. So what you see there before you is a breakdown of the development standards as specified by the Community Facilities District, including setbacks, heights, lot coverage, floor-air ratio, landscape coverage, and parking required. As you can see, the proposed project does meet all applicable development standards as set forth in the Community Facilities District as well as with the requirements for parking consistent with past approvals, the fact that the site operates with a shared parking approval. Here's some elevations just to give a sense of the architectural style. The architecture is proposed to match the existing sanctuary. This is, you can see the middle portion in all these pictures and all these slides is going to be the colored renderings to give a better sense. I know not everyone can probably understand from the elevations what they're looking at, but this would be the corner there in that middle visual simulation of what you would see coming in off of Calle La Primavera. You can see here, as shown down below, is an arcade. You can see that arcade entranceway there off Calle La Primavera. You can also see the pitch of the roof, as it's a metal seam roof that pitches down to the low point in the back there where the pen is currently moving, is at 19 feet high and does ultimately go up to about 33 feet, which is shown there on the bottom, that tall part that's facing the parking lot. That is the tallest portion of the project, again, consistent with the height requirements. You can also see, so this is also a visual simulation of the backside of the proposed parish center. You can see the second-story balcony setback approximately 65 feet from the top of slope, which is the property line for the, for the project site. You can see on the elevation here, the doors here, as well as the proposed accordion doors facing out, and then the meeting space and second-story balcony setback, again, in this back area, 65 feet. And then this is an elevation on the bottom, again, that just shows what the, facing the sanctuary, what that elevation would appear as. And lastly, just the elevation of the proposed North X to that front entry into the church, which will operate as commonly referred to as like a vestibule type of thing, in case you're not familiar with what a North X is. It is a means for just entering, for entering inside before going into the church. You can see that they're proposing to utilize stained glass windows and a new entry element there as well into the church. So now we're getting into some floor plans. You can see here, this is the proposed first floor of the new Pastoral Center. You can see here, this is the new meeting room slash larger, in terms of talking with people, larger potential reception area when all of the removable retractable doors are open. You can also see a consolidation of the office space and lobby space there on the first floor, as well as ancillary back of house, and through this area, commercial kitchen, the teen room, and some smaller meeting rooms. And then on the second floor, again, the balcony above and going into the meeting rooms, and then these are the offices for, as it calls out, the fathers and the priests and pastors associated with the church. And you can see that the area above that, the larger room, that's a vaulted ceiling. You can see there is no second-story area closer to that bluff property. Those are all vaulted ceilings, as well as closer to Calle La Primavera. This is a parapet roof where all the mechanical equipment will be, so it's screened, as well as to also help with some of the sound attunization, so there's also no second-story area in that area as well. And then you can see how the new North X entry into the church with these entrances on this far side. Again, this would be the parking lot up here, entryway into the church being pushed out just slightly on the interior side with no seating expansion, there's no proposed seating with the, proposed addition to the entrance into the church. So this is a component that's actually in the, in your packet this evening. This is a breakdown that staff asked the applicant to do to kind of show apples-to-apples comparison of the existing and proposed uses. All of the uses that are proposed are the same uses as existing today. You can see here that a lot of the main expansion areas have to do with the restaurant halls, stairs, and lobbies. That has to do directly as a result of accessibility requirements. We're dealing with what's being demolished are primarily buildings that were constructed in the 70s and 80s, when a period of time in which accessibility requirement is not what they are what they are today. And so a lot of that extension, expansions occurring there, and we are seeing some meeting room expansion primarily as a result of the second floor and the smaller meeting rooms on the, on the first floor. So the last component of the project that I just wanted to highlight is the site development permit that is required. There is a proposed retaining wall along the frontage that is above 30 inches in height that is visible from the public right-of-way. This is Calle La Primavera here. And so this retaining wall, it serves a few purposes. One is that it helps to support the proposed project, but also helps with drainage of the site. There's a whole new drainage system that's being proposed independent of the existing drainage system, as well as water quality requirements that will be done to filter any water runoff, to make sure there is no water quality impacts from the site. Additionally, staff has had them show and include trees that would help screen the height of this wall and condition the project to also include vines that will be planted at the base and trained to grow vertically to help reduce the overall massing of it. And you can see that picture is the existing slope as it is today. So there was a number of public outreach events that occurred, a number of conversations with members of the public associated with processing this project, and we're going to get into a number of the issues that we heard through that process. One of those, first off the top, was had to do with parking of the site. As stated earlier, they are proposing to continue the shared parking arrangement that was approved previously, and that's based on the varying peak utilization of the various uses on-site. Church will continue to be the primary use on-site. Staff did also have an independent parking utilization study be completed, and that's the October 2018 information. And based on that peak utilization, both at the Sunday at 11:30 and Sunday at 6:00 PM, there was still a surplus of parking even at peak use of the site of about 35 parking spaces, and that's based on if the project were to be approved, that assumes those 12 parking spaces have been removed. So that would be, what would be remaining if the project final site plan is approved and laid out as such. And to point out, I know those are not the mass times of those Saturday and Sundays. That was purposeful. It was taken a half hour after each of the masses, assuming that people may go late to church and also try to leave early. And so trying to capture both of those things of people running late and leaving early for mass, we purposefully did that to try to get the most true impact and utilization of the parking. Additionally, we heard concerns of traffic regarding the proposed project, and so again, independently, staff had the city's third-party traffic engineer, LLG, who is available here this evening if necessary for any questions, and evaluated the Calle La Primavera from when it is at PCH in Crystal Lantern and as it moves up the hill to all the way at every intersection up until Calle La Primavera and Selva, and evaluated the level of service at morning peak, at in essence, school drop-off, midday peak, which is in an essence, school pickup, as well as afternoon and then Sunday potential peaks. And during all of those, you can see here from the list and as provided in the staff report, and I believe it's Table 3 in your staff report for ease, it's, you can see that it primarily operates all of those intersections at a level A or B, and that's based on a C is the minimum requirement, so it's operating at the highest or second-highest level of service. It is important to note that while there is some expectation there will be some increase in trip generations due to the increase in meeting space and office space, it is not foreseen that it would though create a negligible, it's a negligible expansion and will not impact the level of service on the street on Calle La Primavera. And so as you can, sorry, and just in conclusion there, you can see the delta between existing with the proposed project will not result ultimately in a change in the level of service along Calle La Primavera. Another issue that staff evaluated was the noise for the proposed project. A separate noise analysis was completed, which is included as supporting document six in your packet this evening. It was determined that with the new technology that's now inapplicable in terms of the California Building Code, requirements placed upon insulation, things of that nature, as well as double-pane windows and other construction methods proposed that are standard, it would be, even with amplified sound internally in the facility, that would be a 33 decibel at the residential property line, which is 22 decibels below the noise ordinance limitation of 55. A main reason why the big changes is that this is, again, new construction. It's replacing a 47-year-old building. Another component of this has to do with the operational conditions of approval as well, that staff has put on this project, which we're going to touch on here in a little bit regarding noise to try to address issues that we've heard from the public in terms of processing the project. Talking a bit about SEQA, the proposed project staff has evaluated fully in conjunction with all the studies that we have received and completed, and based on that, the Class 32 infill development is applicable for the 11,463-square-foot addition that the proposed project is to the site, that the project site is less than five acres. It's within an urbanized area as defined by SEQA and state code. Staff has evaluated the proposed project associated with air quality impacts consistent with the Cali mod requirements of AQMD, and it's well below any thresholds that would be in terms of all particulate matters and greenhouse gases. Staff has indicated, based on the independent traffic study that was completed, there's no traffic impacts, no noise impacts, especially with the operational conditions, as well as with the new construction materials. There's no habit identified habitat on-site. The WQMP preliminarily has been approved, and a separate final WQMP will still need to be reviewed and approved prior to any issuance of any permits for the site and all utilities and infrastructure is existing, and the NOE is provided as supporting document three this evening. Lastly here, as we are getting towards the end of my presentation, I just want to point out a few operational conditions which staff has conditioned on this project. First and foremost, has to do with that the Pastoral Center will be limited to one reception slash event a day, meaning that if there's only going to be potentially one reception, then that's it. One potential funeral in the, with inside the facility, and that's it. It is not meant to be multiple facilities over and over. It's one facility, one potential event a day. Also, no events in the Pastoral Center can occur during mass or school drop-off or pickup, and that's without opening up the flex or overflow parking, which is also talked about in the next one, the utilization. Not only is it required associated with whenever the mass, the sanctuary is in use in conjunction with the Pastoral Center, we're also requiring that the final parking and circulation plan be put together prior to issuance of any construction documents on how people will be directed onto that, into that flex overflow parking to maximize utilization, and also that we have a separation of events in Pastoral, in the Pastoral Center as well as within the sanctuary of approximately a minimum of 30 minutes of unrelated masses. And again, that's to allow for people who are there for masses to leave and open up free parking for people who potentially are visiting for events within the Pastoral Center. Associated with noise, has a requirement, and this is consistent with the noise analysis, all doors and windows are to be kept shut during all events that are occurring inside the Pastoral Center. So that means when especially any kind of noise, amplified sound, live entertainment is occurring. Also, all events must end by 10:00 PM, and that's consistent with the municipal code with all cleanup ending by 11 o'clock PM, and anything, any cleanup that would need to occur past 11 o'clock PM cannot restart again until 7:00 AM, after 7:00 AM the next day. And lastly, as a component of this project, no exterior live entertainment or amplified sound will be permitted on-site in that grass area without a separate special event permit that will have to justify what is the findings and justify the special need above and beyond normal events that can occur inside with the doors and windows shut. So in, oh, and one last thing, there has been extensive public notification processes associated with the project. On May 10th of this year, staff conducted, actually in this building across the way, a community meeting in which we met with members of the public to discuss SEQA and the proposed project, as well as the church conducted its own separate community meeting on, in May, on May 29th of this year. Also, public notification was sent 12 days prior to the hearing. The municipal code only requires 10-day notification, and that's consistent with even larger projects that have recently gone before Planning Commission and City Council. It's important to note that we heard from the community at those meetings of concerns regarding notification and wanting to make sure an expanded mailer be sent and requested be sent out, and so the church provided a mailer of 1,200 feet rather than the required 500 feet, which resulted in 2,100 notices being sent for the proposed project. So in conclusion, based on staff's evaluation, the proposed project is consistent with all applicable Dana Point zoning code requirements. There's a number of operational conditions of approval that have been provided to ensure that the project does not create impacts to the surrounding neighborhood, and staff has determined that all the findings can be made for the conditional use permit and the site development permit as applicable, and that staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolution approving the CUP, the conditional use permit and the site development permit subject to the draft findings and conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available should you have any questions.
All right. We're open for questions from. All right. Planning Commissions, Commissioners were opening these questions up for the staff.
Shawn, what are the conditions that require enforcement if the conditions of approval aren't met?
So the question is, is what are the enforcement mechanisms or what can be done if, on compliance with the conditions, if I'm not mistaken? So if there is found to be in compliance with the conditions, condition of approval, number 11 states that there is a process in which the city can go through to open the conditional use permit back up, to either require additional conditions of approval that, that may address whatever issues we seem to be having in terms of noncompliance, or ultimately could result in rescinding of the approval of the use within the Pastoral Center.
Any other questions for staff?
Has the, has the city attorney reviewed the SEQA documentation relative to the selection of exemption, having this project be exempt from SEQA?
I have.
Okay. Could you elaborate a little bit as to what went into that, your judgment of it being exempt?
Yeah, absolutely. Under the SEQA guidelines and specifically Section 15332 for infill developments, there are one, two, three, four, five requirements in order to be categorized as an infill development. I'm going to summarize them. Generally speaking, you have to be consistent with general plan designation and zoning designation. The project must also occur within city limits on a site of no more than five acres and be substantially surrounded by urban uses. That the project has no value as habitat for endangered rare or threatened species. That the approval of the project would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality, and that the site can be adequately served by all the required utilities and public services. And as Mr. Nicholas pointed out before, we conducted a series of studies to confirm that, in particular, that there were no traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality effects resulting from the project, and I concur with staff's decision that the infill exemption is appropriate here.
Shawn, you talked about reviewing traffic circulation later. Why, why is that not being analyzed, you know, in conjunction with this approval?
So a preliminary in the, are you talking about the flex parking in particular? Is that, or just on-site, or just the traffic associated with the project?
I think, I think you said, like, the traffic circulation would be, would be considered or manipulated at a later date. Was that to see kind of the patterns, or?
What I meant was, is that in my presentation, and so from when I was in the site plan, and I mentioned we'll talk about traffic and circulation later in the staff report. The analysis regarding the table with all the various levels of service, as well as peak utilization is that analysis.
Okay. Thank you. Has it ever been considered to reverse the flow of the parking lot to, you know, have ingress and egress in the swat locations?
I can't speak in terms of what the process or thought process has been in the past. I know our review that this has been the existing since at least the early 2000s, and the goal was to try to, with the applicant's proposal, was to increase the flow through the ingress as its design. I'm not sure if a full evaluation has been completed on what the benefits may or may not be of that, but I know that that's just been as it is, and we've moved forward with our evaluation based on that.
Okay. Thank you. And some of the letters of opposition have raised that prior mitigation measures that were imposed on the project haven't been fully implemented. Could you address that?
So as it was, is condition of approval, 10, all previous applicable conditions of approval are still fully in effect, and then as a component of this project, we did go back through and evaluate all of the previous approvals and resolutions on the proposed project. Based on staff's analysis of that, the church did, the applicant did have to address a few items to be in conformance with that, but in terms of some of the items that I believe you're referring to in terms of off-site improvements. believe you're referring to in terms of off-site improvements, staff is, has, has evaluated that, and it's been determined that all of the applicable improvements off-site have been completed, consistent with the goals and intents of those approvals.
Okay, and I noticed that, thank you, and I noticed that there's kind of a catch-all condition, that the director of public works can add conditions in the future if he deems it necessary, he or she?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more questions?
Madam Chair, I have a few questions for staff. I'm not sure, I have a few for the traffic engineer, I think. So, we're doing a use permit, are we, where are you there, Sean? Is this, are we wiping out the old use permit and all the conditions, and this is a brand-new one, or are we layering another use permit with more conditions on them?
It is layering another condition on top of it. We thought it would be cleaner with this proposal to do a clean conditional use print, and that's why conditional approval 10, to your point expressly directs, expressly points out that all the previous conditions of approval are still fully in effect. Regardless of this application approval or denied, those would still be in effect.
So if there's a conflict between conditions, what would the more?
Bringe it would.
Stranger one would apply then, so for like events?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you, and then the other question I had, and I couldn't find it, is, do you know what the change in lot coverage is? I know the FAR is spelled out, it's a 12% change, but what I was trying to calculate was, we have building footprint out there in FAR, and has that reduced change, or is And I don't need it, you can.
I don't, I don't have an exact number in front of me. We can, I can try to calculate it out here as, as the, we go along. I know that the square footage is 11,400 and something that I put up on that slide, and that has to do with the second story. I know the, the first floor footprint is pretty similar, just consolidating those buildings. And I think that image I liked of the site plan with the proposed, with the existing to be demolished really shows how it's just those buildings that are more separated and dated are being brought together. So it's going to be pretty similar, pretty close.
As far as footprint?
But sorry, as far as footprint, yes, sir.
Okay. And then, this was discussion about making sure there's no impacts, and it's the thing I'm trying to understand is what makes something an impact. So for instance, how do we make, how do we determine that the noise levels are impactful or not impactful? Because everybody has, you know, a certain level that they're okay with. For instance, my wife can't stand the TV shows I watch. So I have to wear earphones?
So, what we have as basis is, is the CEQA thresholds, and that's based on our city's noise ordinance. And based on that analysis, based on that, those thresholds, a noise analysis was completed for the proposed project to evaluate with the features proposed in terms of new construction, doors, windows, and, you know, and the types of events that they propose to have in there, they calculate how, what will be the threshold and the impact at the property line, and that's not even at the nearest receptor, that's at the nearest receptor's property line, the residential property line. And based on that, you get a decibel level, which has to be at or below 55, which they are below in this case.
Okay, so that's, there's a threshold that?
Yes, sir.
That everybody has to live up to?
Yes, sir.
And that's in our, where do you?
That's in the municipal code.
Okay, all right. I think the functions of the building have been clarified. As it relates to the existing operations, what's allowed currently there that's either not allowed, going to be allowed here, or would change if this was approved?
So, this would limit more the amount of potential events they could have. Right now, there is no limitation if approved. This would limit them to one such event within the pastoral center. Additionally, right now, they can have, they have outside noise on that lawn. We hear a lot about this would prohibit that without a special separate event permit being done, so that would all be prohibited. Additionally, all windows and doors would be required to be shut for the pastoral center when, essentially when any live event with amplified sound and live entertainment. While right now, we hear from the public that those doors and windows, there is no such requirement. And also, the building being, again, 47 years old, we've been, we understand that there is no air conditioning, and so, again, that will help improve the ability to keep the doors shut with this new proposed, so. Oh, and then also, we're more, we are solidifying the requirements and use of the flex slash overflow parking there, and how that will be managed and when it will be required to be utilized.
Okay, so if, so currently, right, they could have two weddings, three weddings on, in any day under their existing use permit. If we change it tonight, we're adding a new condition which says you can only do one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that also has specific conditions relative to noise?
Yes, sir.
And they can't do any outdoor events?
Yes, sir.
That have amplified music?
That is correct, sir.
Or any type of microphone, or, okay?
That is correct, sir.
And there are no, are there outdoor speakers or sound devices proposed in this application?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, and then, so now, going, if you go look at that parking slide, I'm just, I'm curious on the difference between the two studies, and maybe if you can answer this and the traffic engineer can answer this, maybe the applicant might be able to shed light on the operation, but there was a significant difference in the parking use?
In June and October?
Between June and October?
This slide? So, the June was a parking utilization that was provided by the church in terms of their use, and staff had concerns because it was done at a time where, during the summer, and at a time where maybe the kids wouldn't be in session, so there might not have been utilization by families who are in school or going to there, and it was also a Father's Day weekend, and so we were worried that that might have impacted the numbers. And so, working independently and without notification to the church, we worked with L.L.G. Rich and his team to get a independent and objective during the, a typical Sunday when during, while school is in session, so that way it would be as true of a, of a picture of utilization of the parking on Sunday as we could get.
Okay, so then the October day would be the more accurate?
Based on staff, in terms of you could say the majority of the year, that would be the more accurate.
All right. And then, as it relates to park these counts, when we look at the numbers on these slides where it shows surplus, does that include or not include the overflow lot?
That does not include.
So if there's a 35 space surplus in October, and they had the surplus?
Hundred and seven.
Which is like 100 and some?
So it'd be close to like 145 spaces would be available.
Okay. And that's, okay, so that's not on this slide, okay, good.
And that, again, that's also, that 35 number also assumes the loss of the 12. If the project were to be approved and built, it assumes the minus 12 available spaces.
All right, it's already assumed in there, okay.
Yep, yep. So that way, it would be the most true showing of what would, what would be available if approved.
I, I think you mentioned 10:00 PM, but I wanted to confirm the hours of, that they're allowed to have events within the facility?
10:00 PM is correct, sir.
And what's the earliest they can have an event?
7:00 AM, I guess, would be the earliest, and that's, has to do with the municipal code. Again, that would be the earliest in which 55 decibels becomes applicable before 7:00, between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, it's a lower decibel, so I would say 7:00 AM, and that's just a function of the code.
So, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM is their operational hours?
Pretty much, yeah.
All right. On the setbacks, just wanted to confirm that the southern boundary of the site, which bumps up against the residential?
Yes, sir.
Is that the, is that a side yard?
Yes, sir. It's technically a side yard.
So the front yard is out on?
Kyla Primera.
Okay, got it, all right.
And that's why the requirement is 10, they have 14 feet to the, to the actual structure itself.
Okay. All right, and now, traffic. General question relative to these intersection, the intersection data. So my assumption is that we have good intersections on the weekend, because we don't have a lot of people driving around going to work. When you look at a building like this, or the, the increase in trips, what does that do to a typical intersection from a delay point of view?
Yeah, just take, Rich Berto, Principal of Lynn Scott Law and Greens, managing engineers, traffic consultant to the city. You know, when we took a look at the project description and what the current uses are, and we look at the, the, essentially the net increase in the, the office space, the meeting space, et cetera, the added trips from that alone don't generate enough traffic that would, would even trigger a drop in service level. So it's a real nominal amount of traffic it would generate from a weekday standpoint. You know, when you specifically look at the pastoral center, it's, it's primarily a weekend condition or weekend, so the added trips that it would generate during the weekday would probably be nominal relative to the overall setting that you see on a daily basis with the school and the residents that are going on. And then as it relates to a Sunday condition, the overlapping use on how the center is currently used now and how they foresee it kind of going, going forward, it would be, you know, offsetting from that standpoint, because, again, the primary generator for church facilities, whether, you know, Christian, Catholic, et cetera, is primarily the sanctuary when, you know, services are in attendance and the bulk of the people are there attending a mass or a service.
Okay. And do you recall what the total new generate, trip generation was? The AM, and then if you could just give me the AMP, AM and PMP, if we, if you do have that?
Sure.
I'm sure it's in the report, but I don't, can't remember what page.
So, specific to the, the project itself, again, because the, the, the project, as we understand, is this pastoral center. So within an overall weekday center setting, when the center is primarily a weekend, the weekday trips that you foresee is, you know, on the order of, of three trips during the AMP hour. And again, when I talk about the AMP hour, I'm talking about the highest hour sometime between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning. And then in the, in the afternoon peak hour, again, some hour between 4:00 and 6:00, it's another six trips that you would expect. The mid, the mid-afternoon or the school period drop-off, which we also looked at, just because, again, the, the primary generator for the campus itself is, is the, is the parish school, this project probably on the order of maybe nine trips that it would end up generating. So it's from an overall scheme of things of looking at what the project generates relative to what the school generates, it's, you know, real nominal.
Okay. And then when you, the numbers you gave me, are those the new trips?
Yeah.
Attributable to the expanded areas?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are the added trips.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further comments? All right, then, we are going to.
Danny, Commissioner?
Yes.
Chairwoman, I, I have one question for clarification. Just to confirm, the, the parking calculations are kind of governed, a bigger constraint or requirement is based on the Sunday services, correct? Not based on the expansion of the pastoral center?
The peak use of the site is the church Sunday services, yes.
So, in, in this analysis, that remains to be the peak use?
Based on the shared parking and the fact that there's no expansion of the proposed uses, yes. The, the primary use of the site is still the church, and that's still the parking driver, the highest parking driver for peak use.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we are going to open up the public comment. Each speaker will be provided three minutes to speak. We would ask that, depending on how many speakers we have, at some point, if we're not moving along quickly enough, we may have to bring it down to two minutes per speaker. So we're just hoping that won't occur, but that is a possibility. Again, each speaker will be provided three minutes to speak.
Madam Chairperson, would the applicant be able to, to make a brief presentation?
Yes. Sure, we'll do it in that way. Yes, the applicant will speak first.
All right, Rod Foster and David, oh, the bishop will go first, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Chair Murphy and members of the Dana Point Planning Commission. I am Bishop Tim Frye, auxiliary bishop of the Diocese of Orange. It is an honor to speak before you this evening on behalf of the diocese and the parish of St. Edward the Confessor located here in Dana Point. The Pastoral Center project represents the culmination of many years of planning and collaboration. Considering that replacement of the old temporary structures, Night Hall and the old rectory, were contemplated in the master plan we adopted back in 1999, we can say this project is almost 20 years in the making. So tonight represents a very important milestone for St. Edward Parish and the Diocese of Orange. This project is made possible by the support and donations of our parishioners, most of whom are Dana Point residents and business owners. Our Dana Point community has gotten us to where we are tonight, and we are most thankful for your generosity. It is impossible to overstate the importance and need for the Pastoral Center project. From the perspective of the diocese, we view the proposed structure as one that will appropriately serve the needs of our existing parish and fulfill our mission of love and service. Consider the bereavement ministry, which assists and supports families of the deceased with planning funeral services, or the parents' grief group ministry. We would like them to be able to do their ministry work in appropriate small meeting rooms instead of a third-grade classroom or a cramped, cramped older confessional booth now converted into an office. Or perhaps consider our Tijuana ministry, which meets each week to make 300 peanut butter and jelly sandwiches to deliver to our disadvantaged neighbors in Mexico. We would like them to have access to an appropriately sized kitchen facility rather than the small 45-year-old kitchen in Night Hall. Regardless of the activity, the proposed pastoral center structure will be vastly more effective as compared with existing conditions. Currently, as you heard, Night Hall features decades-old construction, minimal insulation, no air conditioning, and single-pane glass windows. I will defer further building specifics to our project architect, whose remarks will follow, but I am offering this thought to emphasize that this project is also designed with our surroundings and neighborhood in mind. It is the mission of the Diocese of Orange to be good and respectful neighbors in all of our communities throughout the county. We have listened to feedback from the community and have proactively taken the steps we can to address any concerns. Furthermore, we've redoubled our efforts to encourage parish visitors to drive safely and respectfully by again posting signs discouraging our visitors and parishioners from parking on the surrounding public streets. As you've heard, in fact, several weeks ago, St. Edward's staff mailed about 2,300 postcards in the community corresponding to the notice area for the project you are considering tonight. The purpose of the postcard was to seek feedback via email on our progress addressing parking and traffic issues. We received a total of 14 emails in response, about one-half of 1%. The more, the majority of those were positive, thanking us for placing the signs and acknowledging an improvement in conditions, while others suggested both speed bumps and/or additional law enforcement to help curb vehicular speed and rolling stops at intersections, a concern that we know is not exclusive to this neighborhood but exists throughout the county. There were also some comments regarding music, yet as you will hear shortly, our new building design will help to contain the noise upon the construct, upon the construction of the current buildings. I know this is not scientific by any means, but it is at least indicative in some way of our efforts that go beyond the minimum required of any property order owner under similar application with the city. The bottom line is that St. Edward Parish, as a responsible organization and a neighbor in the community, cares and will continue to make every effort to be considerate of its fellow neighbors. I'd like to conclude by thanking the city staff for its careful and professional analysis of the Pastoral Center project, and this commission for your time and consideration of the project. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dave Pfeifer, our project architect from DOMA Studios, who present details on the Pastoral Center. Again, thank you very much for the opportunities to present this important project on behalf of the Diocese of Orange.
Good evening, David Pfeifer, DOMA Studio Architecture. In light of staff's.
In light of staff's very detailed presentation, I have way more slides here than are necessary, so I'm going to just hit some high points where I can backfill some information to cover some questions asked by commissioners or hit other salient points. This project is about allowing the existing uses to occur onsite in a better and more efficient and respectful manner. This project is not about new uses. There's worship, there's meetings, there's receptions, there's business administration, and there's school onsite. All of those uses, at the end of this project, if implemented, will remain at their current levels. What this building does, and this speaks to one of the commissioner's questions, for example, there's religious education classes. They occur in the school classrooms now. And with the new Pastoral Center, those smaller meeting rooms and the big room can break down, all of those uses can happen in the facility as opposed to walking across the parking lot. Going to fast forward just to the applicable slides. So here, I wanted to highlight what Sean, what staff covered. There's existing parking here and existing parking here that we're eliminating. This is a, those backup movements hinder the inboard movements of circulation into the site. To address, I think, one of the commissioner's questions about flipping the traffic circulation, it is this way in a counterclockwise manner so that the passenger side door is against the curb for safe drop-off. Another policy the parish is implementing is making sure that the existing lot is filled fully, pushing to that western boundary and then filling the lot out this way, trying to break current or past patterns. And then staff covered on this, but there's a legitimate drop-off zone, nine feet wide, 90 feet long, that currently those vehicles stop in the traffic lane. This is an ample space for those elderly or youth can pull off into this curb blister and allow the site to flush quite quickly. I'm going to cover noise. The red boundary is around the big room that currently those functions happen in Night Hall. This will be a contemporarily constructed building with sound attenuation, dual glazed windows, and air conditioning, so the windows don't have to be open. The construction of this building will improve the existing noise that occurs onsite now. Secondly, staff covered this, but in this portion here, this is where all the air conditioning equipment will be retained. It also is behind sound attenuated parapet walls, so that noise will not emanate into the neighborhood. I'm sorry, I'm just going to go slowly through these. I don't think you saw these. This is an aerial shot of the existing. We have Night Hall and the offices here. With the improvements, we're consolidating those footprints, and here's the narthex addition to the church. It is a vestibule as described. A little view from the southwest, similar, and the proposal at the entrance. From Calle Primavera, we worked hard with staff to provide adequate buffering with landscaping, greenery, to really mitigate that slope. The current slope is under eucalyptus trees, which make the soil alkali, and things don't grow. So we'll be able to improve not only the trees, but the mid-story and the understory of that planting. And then just the pastoral vista within the campus. I'm not sure if this was provided to staff or to the commissioners, but question from staff, here's the property line diagram showing the residences south of the property, but essentially the roof line is just below the pad elevation. And where there is the second story, it's at least 67 and gets up to 80 feet away from the property line. It's because the building is skewed from the property line, and that's where we could be as close as 10 feet, but we're not. Oops, sorry, went the wrong way. And then lastly, this was Night Hall, built in 1971, '72. This parish has been in this community for upwards of almost 50 years. This parish is part of your community. The people who go here are part of your constituents. And all the uses that are going to happen onsite do happen onsite. This isn't an addition of capacity or activity. It's maintenance of those existing uses in a better, more efficient, more respectful manner. I'm going to leave it there and be available for questions. So thank you very much.
We're going to call speakers up one at a time. Actually, you want to? So we're going to go ahead and call up speakers one at a time. If you hear your name called, please come up to the microphone and... Did you see how it's opened? Yeah, that was the first speaker. So our second speaker is Edwin Woodsum, and I apologize if I butcher your name here.
My name is Ed Woodsum. I live at 33932 Calle La Primavera. The house is probably closest to the church property, along with our neighbor. I first heard about this project earlier this year, and since I've handled cases of this sort for a living for a long time, when I first heard about it, I was a little concerned. But then I thought about it, and the first thought that occurred was, well, you're going to have to go through CEQA. So you can imagine my surprise when I read that they were somehow exempt from CEQA. I'm not going to spend my three minutes explaining to you all the reasons why they're wrong, but my suggestion to the commission would be to have someone go look at some of the cases, because it is absolutely crystal clear that there has to be CEQA compliance, and it is, I am certain that I can probably get the Attorney General to come in as amicus and require that there be a CEQA review. The second point I'd like to make relates to notice. Now, I heard that we had somewhere around 12 days' notice, someone might have had 12 days' notice, but the residents didn't. The notice says that it was sent out on, on or before November 23. I thought on or before was odd, because normally when you send out a proof of service, it's on such and such a date. Well, it turns out that the parishioners heard about it before we did, and indeed, some of us didn't hear about it until last Monday, the 26th of November. We didn't see the report until Wednesday, the 28th. You all have the report, and you know it's not light reading. It's about 180 pages long. And a number of us have submitted letters in opposition. They're not as long and detailed as we would have preferred, but it's the best we could do under the circumstances, and we will supplement those statements as we go along. Notices are fine, but they are trumped by something called due process, which is another way of saying fundamental fairness. In a situation like this, given the amount of time and effort that went into preparing this and the amount of time that's been given us to respond to it, it doesn't pass the smell test for due process. I really encourage you to read some of the letters that have been submitted, some of the statements. There's a gentleman by the name of Payne, another one by the name of Schnapp. You can read mine if you feel like it. But I want to end by saying something about safety. I live right next to the church. My roof has had to been repaired multiple times by objects that were thrown. I noticed it didn't ding when the bishop went over three minutes, but that's beside the point.
If you could wrap it up.
It's a safety issue, it's a real safety issue. My grandkids can't go out in the back of our house to play. The children next door can't go out in the back of their house and play. I mentioned this to the pastor in June or July, and I didn't get a very satisfactory answer. And as I told him and as I'll tell you, we're not talking about civil liability here. God forbid some child should be hurt. We're talking about criminal liability. And I just urge the commission and the city council to look very, very carefully at this. You're encringing on the safety as well as the property rights of your neighbors.
Thank you. Roger Borge. And I'm going to call up the next speaker to line up behind Roger, and that would be Mark.
I'm Roger Borgy, and I live at 33895 Calle La Primavera. My home is probably the closest property to the proposed new building that's going to be built at the church. To echo what the gentleman said before, the traffic and the safety is my major concern. Living there for four years, I've had to basically go out in the morning and stop traffic to get my wife out of the driveway so she'd go to work in the morning. The parishioners that are going in and out of the parking lot will not go ahead and even yield to let us get out of the driveway. And I've had multiple situations where I've had to go out, literally go out in the street and get traffic stopped so my wife could go ahead and get her car out of the driveway and go to work. We've also had multiple situations over the last four years where we've nearly been hit by cars on the street, just simply trying to cross the street with our dog to get the dog out in the morning. And we have a real problem with speeding people going up and down Calle La Primavera, the mothers rushing in to drop those kids off to go to school and rushing in to pick them up, and they drive beyond the speed limit of 25 miles an hour. They go ahead and they do not yield to pedestrians. They seem to feel they have the right of way on that street, and it's had been a very negative impact on the quality of life of our community. I'm grunting the thought of an additional 11,000-square-foot building attracting more people to the church, as the church is already huge as it is right now. And it's impacting the community in my view in a negative way as far as traffic congestion and just the fact that it seems that the people that go to the parish there don't seem to be mindful of the fact that they're in a residential community. And their driving and their speeding and the noise and so forth has a real impact on us. I can't even walk out in my driveway on a Saturday night half the time and not hear music blurring from the hall across the street. Now, maybe these changes will help that situation, but in the meantime, we're going to have to endure months of additional traffic on that street, months of construction trucks, additional people, additional noise while this development's being pursued. And I'm very concerned about the quality of life there. I've been trying to sell my unit. It's definitely not going to help my property values and help me get my property sold with this project going on for, I don't know, a year, two years before it's finally completed. So I'm opposed, and I hope that you guys think about the impact this project has on the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Penelope Coats. I'm going to call up another speaker to line up behind her, Mark Reynosa.
I'm Dr. Penelope Coats, and I live directly opposite to the entrance to the church. We are all familiar with the important concepts that have been brought up with regard to this project. So my concern is not, I don't want to speak about the major ones that deal with parking, traffic, driving, safety, et cetera. I want to deal with both noise from deconstruction and also the reconstruction that is proposed, and the air pollution that will exist during the construction period and maybe four months thereafter. And I have a couple of questions. First, how many of the Planning Commission members actually live within proximity to the church?
I'm sorry, this is not a question and answer period. This is time for you to give testimony, but we don't do a question and answer.
Very good.
Sorry.
Then I will move on. One of the things I'm interested in is specifics. We've heard about some of the things, some of the abatement projects, but I would like to hear more specifics with regard to both noise abatement, we've heard some of them, but I haven't heard anything that is really meaningful, and also will there be something like monitors put in to detect noise levels that can be automatically recorded and projected or contacting the city so that people around the area will not have to do it themselves? Because that just isn't fair. That just isn't fair. So I would like to know about that, and I would like to know what kind of monitoring you are planning to deal with air pollution. Air, small particulate matter and large particulate matter are very important in the health of the surrounding area, and I'm wondering how, what plans or mitigations are being planned for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And then after Mark, we'll have David Krogan, Krogan I believe it is?
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity. This is due process, this is transparency, so thank you for your time and everybody participating today. My name's Mark Reynosa. I live on Piquito Drive, which is very close to the school, with my wife and four children. And just to sum it up real quickly, St. Edward's has been a good neighbor. We've lived there for five and a half years. I enjoy walking my kids to and from school, and I think the school will do its best to accommodate, collaborate with the community. They've done so in the past for many years, and they'll continue to do that in the future. It's a beautiful facility. It's a jewel, in my opinion, and I really would, I'm here today in favor of the project that's in compliance with the laws. And again, just to emphasize that if, it's already a condensed housing area. There's multiple, multiple unit family housing on Primavera. That adds to the existing congestion right now. That's not going to go away. Dan Hill's a tight community. St. Edward's has been a really good neighbor. It's really better than my smoky neighbor I have next door, but that's a different story. And anyhow, thank you for the due process and transparency.
Thank you. And following, Mr. Krogan will be Bob Zaza.
My name is Dr. David Krogan. My family and I are 30-year residents of Dana Point, and for the last 15 years, we've lived on Calle La Primavera directly below the church, like some of the other people. I know many of the local residents and the people tonight have mentioned their concerns. I won't repeat them except to say they're more than justified, but I'd like to mention in depth another problem that the previous doctor brought up. I'm a board-certified pediatrician. I've practiced medicine for over 40 years. The most common health problem chronically in children is asthma, and I would like to suggest to you that this project could likely jeopardize the health of many of the local residents, even the very children who attend the church elementary school onsite. The dust and debris and particulate matter from the destruction of these buildings, which we now know are 47 years old, likely will result in air pollution, not unlike the California fires we've recently experienced. This will exacerbate breathing problems even in healthy individuals. These respiratory attacks would require immediate emergency attention, and if you've witnessed a child or an elderly person with a breathing issue, it's very alarming. Not all patients survive such attacks. Short- and long-term healthcare will be affected in children as well as adults. I urge the Planning Commission to do the right thing- I urge the planning commission to do the right thing and vote against this project. Why even consider putting the community's health at risk at this point? We as citizens need to be protected by our local government. Surely you can appreciate that. Respectfully, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Bob Zaza, followed by Sue McClanahan.
My name is Robert Zaza. I live at 21 Torazza Del Mar. I'm here in favor of the project. I wanted to explain why and explain that I'm a parishioner, but I'm also on board of the Dana Point Symphony. Many of us on the board support this project. They've been very good to us, allowing us to use the sanctuary two or three times per year, as we're going to do our December 14 concert there. The symphony doesn't take political positions, but many of the board members asked me to please express our thanks to the parish and to allow us to use that facility as a cultural in the evening with the noise abatement and things that you're instituting in this project that would be even better. We only use the sanctuary, but we do use the hall periodically for artists to come and display quietly, I might add. But we think this is a very good project, and we appreciate very much the support of the parish and the dioceses. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sue McClanahan, followed by Daniel Shope.
Hello, my name is Sue McClanahan. I live on the street directly below the church property, Caillac Primavera. I thought I'd give you a little background. I grew up in a Catholic home and have been lucky enough to visit the home of Mary in Turkey. That experience was one of unusual serenity that overcame me. So I understand the reverence of this iconic figure holds for the parishioners, as does Our Lady of Guadalupe. The city code states that public art is defined as historical, archaeological, or paleontological in significance. It further states that a piece of public art is also the landscape, hardscape, and lighting. While it will be according to the plans on private property and surrounding benches on the bluff will add to the, it will be in public view, the placement of the statue on the surrounding, and the surrounding benches on the bluff will add to the already existing issues of people hanging on the fence, hanging around on the fence. I think the inclusion of the statue in a garden setting so that parishioners can sit and contemplate the quiet setting is preferable. As it is now, complete conversations can be heard down the hill on our side. Watch what you say. This isn't conducive to sitting and thinking in the presence of such an iconic figure. Raise your hand if you have ever, while taking your dog out to relieve himself. You've narrowly been missed being hit by a seven-foot log. No hands. Hmm. This happened a month or so ago. It was only a near miss. Guests and their children have reported having to duck when they arrive. Small children don't know to duck. Luckily, no one has been injured, yet. The overall design of the rebuild has moved the fences even closer to our homes and is of a fence design that puts us more at risk. The fence, as shown in the plans, is easily climbed. I could climb it. The question is raised, if a child climbs the fence and injures themselves, and we do have them playing around very near our property line, injure themselves on our property while trespassing, are we liable? The proposed fence design doesn't protect our property. The fences around the property line that exist now have already caused issues in the maintenance of broken sprinkler systems, trash in the V ditches, which cause them overflow when it rains. This has flooded one of our homes below. The increased traffic at the fence increases the endangerment when somebody throws cans, rocks, and other missiles towards our homes. Many of the residents and visitors have narrowly missed being hit, as well as cars parked on the property. The solution would be a six-foot or higher tempered glass fence extending the entire length of the property and returning back to the sanctuary.
If you could wrap it up, please.
Thank you. This would help mitigate some of our issues. If this issue is not resolved by the church, our HOA will have no other recourse than to construct our own solid wall on our property line to protect ourselves, families, and property. In summary, I propose putting the statue of Our Lady of Guadalupe in the planned quiet neighborhood garden benches, and instead of contemplating the homes below, the parishioners can contemplate the value of life.
Thank you. Next up is Daniel Shope, followed by Sybil Hemmingill, I think.
Yes, thank you. I also live on Caillac Primavera, and I'm awoken pretty much every morning by the rush of traffic during the week of the cars coming up. It's quite noisy and it exceeds despicable limitations. It also, besides that, it's also a disruption to the entire neighborhood because, as other people have mentioned, we can't even get out of our driveways. I respectfully have to dispute the reports that were given and reviewed by the city attorney. I've noticed that the traffic has subsided since the church submitted their plan to the city officially. I have videos as well as photos of the traffic before that point. I have videos of the traffic at a complete standstill, most of the time between the hours of 7:30 and 8:00 a.m. And I also would like to comment to the bishop's comment earlier about the flyer that they sent out. Probably the reason he didn't receive very much response to that is because it wasn't taken seriously. The comments regarding the church's willingness to be good neighbors and put out the no parking signs, actually, the church was required to put out these no parking signs as part of the mitigating procedures of their previous expansion project done back in the year 2000. That was neglected for the last 18 years until just recently, they, when they submitted their plan, the city planning commission determined they were not in compliance with their previous regulations, and the code enforcement required to them to put those signs out. And also in regards to the meeting that the church had at the facility for the residents, the residents in attendance that, in attendance at that meeting were pretty much very disappointed we left the meeting with pretty much the impression that we were completely ignored. So in closing, I'd just like to, first of all, recommend that the planning department seriously consider, if not rejecting this permit, at least postponing or tabling it so that all residents have time to completely review and submit their objections. And I would also respectfully ask the church that they desist in their persistence of pushing this forward and instead listen to the voice of the residents and your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sybil Hemmingill, and followed by James Summers.
Hi, my name is Sybil Hemmingill, and I live in Calela Primavera and Zarzito, right in the corner home. And I've been there 18 years, one of the maybe longer resident. So I moved in with a new married couple, you know, ready to have my family down there, but my driveway goes to the Calela Primavera. So mostly is the traffic. In the morning, for a school or any events in the church, people rushes. All those big SUVs, because they go stop in the selva, there's a stop sign three-way, and it goes down the hill with no bumper. So the way they come in, boom, they are late, they don't care, and my car goes back to the Calela Primavera. And you know what they do? I go halfway to the road, they don't stop, they go around my car to get in their school on time or their reception on time. So we write so many letters to the city or the church to kind of help us with this situation because in the morning, I have to back up my car to take my son to the Dana Hills or other middle school or elementary. Every morning, 7:30, there is so many beep, 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 hands are out from the windows. All right? And these people go into the church for some events or drop their kids to do that school. And my other consideration, only question that I have, with this extension, 15 to 23, is almost double. So if you say, we have this area with, say, 500 people, now we're going to extend this room a little larger, but still we're going to have a 500 people, that's okay. But if you extend this one double and you say bring the other two, 300 people in it, this is going to bring a traffic on that street. So is, or anyone want to do it, see it come in at 7:00, 7:30, 8:00? And it's not just that time. Sometimes the church, we love it. I am not against or anything, but they do some events. Sundays, they are late, 8:00, they rush. 9:00, they rush. 10:00, they rush. 12:00, they rush. So extending this church, if it's not going to bring any traffic or safety for our time, no problem. But for you guys, you have to a little bit more determine that subject, maybe send some letter or information to every residential so we get more information that our safety will be more guaranteed. All right? Thank you. That's all my concerns.
Thank you. Next up is James Summers, followed by Andrea Mueller.
Hi, I'm Jim Summers. I live right across the street. It sounds like we all live in the same house. I know. 33945 Caillac Primavera. The commission agenda report says the building will be designed to contain sound within its structural envelope. Quote, "The dB level by the city is 55 till 10 and then 50 after that." I understand they can't go after 10 o'clock with the events. But I'd like to bring out that the company, ID Bre, that did the sound analysis in the report, when you look at the report on page 71, if you note that the music goes from 108 dB down to 87, depending on the frequency. And you hear kids walking around or hear their cars and (mimicking music) out of a car, that's what comes across to my house and shakes my windows when they have a DJ on live music, the low frequencies. Okay? So when you look at this, I just want you to focus on one thing, please. If nothing else stays with you tonight, focus on 25% of the audio decrease in this report by this company says it's going to be corrected by distance correction. Says music, 160 dB, composite TL negative 18, inside-to-outside correction negative 6, distance correction negative 26. Almost 25%. They're hoping the distance from the building to our homes will be decreasing the sound from 100 dB down to the level that gets within compliance. They're saying it's going to end up averaging 33. When they look at the BAT installations, that they're talking about putting in three-inch, I'll just read you a quote. "The most common form of home installation is BAT and roll, which is called blanket installation. It's typically stored in rolls and generally made to go in fiberglass, and it goes on the walls. It's also, quote, 'one of the least expensive ways to insulate a home.'" I've been a musician many years of my life. I've been in recording studios. You can block the sound out. It costs a little bit more money. You completely can block the sound out. Because what you don't want to do is build that and have us call the police, and call the police, and call the police when somebody's having a great fun night, the DJ goes, "Come on, let's party!" In my room, here is it, in my house. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is James Summers, followed, or that was James Summers. So Andrea Mueller, followed by Kurt Mueller.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Andrea Mueller. I am a St. Edward's parishioner. I am a St. Edward's school parent, but most importantly, I'm a neighbor living directly below the church bluff. I have a long list of examples of failures and negligence by the church to provide safety to its neighbors, including my children. You will find more detailed accounts of this in your letter you received today addressed to the planning commission. I already expressed my safety concerns at the meeting held by the church and led by Father Brendan Manson and Rod Foster, Chief of Parish Operations. The church has not addressed these issues with the current night hall and surrounding property. I made it very clear to both men that I fear for the safety of my children's lives because of the many, many close calls we have had with debris and rocks being thrown from the church property onto ours. Since that meeting, I've had to call 911 because I so fear personal injury by the many items being thrown at our home and our persons. Nothing has been done by the church to prevent this. After reading the conditional use permit, all 180 pages in just a few days with a busy family life, the permit made it very clear that our neighbors of the church did not listen to us at their neighborhood meeting, for none of our safety issues are being addressed in the new construction plans. The church is lucky that no one yet has been injured or killed by many instances of rocks and debris thrown from their property. I'm going to go over three minutes, and I hope you bear with me. We have a lovely backyard for our children with a ping-pong table, a dinner table, a sitting area for our family to enjoy family time together. I will not let my children play in their yard because I deeply fear for their personal safety. It has been four years since they have played in their backyard. However, there are still dangers stepping out of our front door, out of our cars, as they are not protected, and I am not protected, nor is my husband, nor our neighbors. I come to you with the truth. Our neighbors, our family, our guests have, by sheer luck, escaped personal injury. However, if you look at my neighbor's roof, you'll find a large rock near a broken tile. If a rock can break a tile, it can break the skull of my child. When is the church going to take responsibility and put up some simple safety precautions to protect life and property of their neighbors? Is their building more important than human life? Planning commission members, I beg you not to approve conditional use permit for the church as it is written, as there are many flaws that need to be addressed. Personal safety depends on it. Property damage depends on it. My children's lives depend on it. Water bottles, spray paints, beer cans, wrappers, trash, toys, pens, balls, wedding bubble containers, newspapers, large plastic bags, large empty flower pots, sticks, logs, rocks, litter, our roofs, yards, and HOA properties. And I have many photos of all these items. I first met Father Brendan shortly after we moved into our home, and it was due to the fact that I was standing outside my front door with my friend, and a wooden ball, the size of a softball, a heavy wooden ball, whizzed past my head, from, came from the church grounds.
Ma'am, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up. I'm sorry, but everybody gets three minutes.
A wedding was taking place, and Father Brendan told me to go talk to ladies in the reception hall. Rocks have been thrown at our balconies from the Diaston Coral Festival. I notified the school principal, the principal. We've had logs thrown at neighbors. The last time I had to call 911 was because I was putting my son to bed and we heard a large crash near his bedroom window. We've had to put an umbrella over my door.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but I really need you to wrap it up. I'm sorry, but everybody gets a fair three minutes, and I need you to stop.
We want the church to address the safety issues of items being thrown. It's very quite simple. They just need to put up a nice, large, eight-foot glass fence, and it'll address items being thrown at us.
So we have rules here, and we ask that you do the same thing.
My name is, good evening, commission members. My name is Kurt Mueller, and I reside at 33934 Caillac Primavera, right below the St. Edward Confessor Church property, with my wife Andrea and two children. We ask that St. Edward the Confessor Church erect an eight-foot wall glass fence to address safety and trash issues along property lines shared by Primavera Community Association. This is outlined in the letter my wife and This is outlined in the letter my wife and I sent to the Planning Commission and hope you will read. The Planning Commission should reject the fence proposed by the church, which is forty-eight inches tall and can be climbed like a ladder by children and adults posing numerous safety concerns outlined in our letter. We also request that the church provide a twenty-four-hour day-a-day security guard assigned to their property and install cameras, motion sensor lights, and other security devices to enhance the safety and security of the church property. We ask that the church place fixed double-pane windows instead of multi-fold glass doors for the new pastoral center to help mitigate noise. We also request that the main exit be as far away from the shared property line with Primavera Community Association as possible to help mitigate noise. We request absolutely no live music events take place on the bluff and request the City of Dana Point not grant a special event permit at any time for live music events to take place on the bluff. The second-floor terrace balcony on the new pastoral center is another area not taken into account for noise. We request that the balcony be enclosed in glass or not be built. We request that no seating benches, sitting benches be placed close to the property line on the bluff due to privacy and safety concerns. We request the statues and benches be moved to a prominent position near the pastoral center as far away from the fence as possible for safety and privacy reasons. We also request view seating at the boardwalk be taken out of the plans or moved on the event lawn as far away from the fence and property line for safety and privacy reasons. We request that no landscaping be done with rocks, bark, or any items that can be thrown for safety reasons. We request the secure bolted-down trash cans be in place so that they cannot be thrown over the bluff for safety reasons. We request the trash cans be empty daily.
Sorry, your time's up, if you could wrap it up, please.
These are all very reasonable requests that we feel the Planning Commission should require Saint Edward the Confessor Church to implement. Thank you for your time and your service to our city.
Thank you. Next up is Steve Schatmeyer, followed by John De Milner, or John Milner, I'm sorry.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Steve Schatmeyer, I lived in Dana Point for about fifteen years. I have a family of five. We also live very close to the church and the school. A walk from our house to the church is about, walks past about eight houses. Over the last fifteen years, for us, traffic and parking has not been an impact or a concern for us, it just hasn't. We've embraced the church and it's made a big difference in our lives. The church has opened up night hall for all three of my boys, for Cub Scouts and Wee Blows, we're there very often and it's been a real blessing. So I'm here along with my son Ben, representing my family in favor of the project. We think it's a terrific community place for us all to enjoy, improve our lives, and an opportunity to embrace the church and fellowship, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is John Milner, followed by Clyde Latcher.
Good evening and thank you for giving me the opportunity to express my concerns on this project. My name is John Milner and I've been a resident of Dana Point for thirty-five years. I've resided with my wife at my current location on La Cresta Drive for twenty-six years. My home is located one house west of the intersection at La Primavera. Over the years of living at this location, I have observed and been directly affected on countless occasions by the disregard of common courtesy shown by Saint Edward's Church and its parishioners towards the local residents. The stop signs at La Primavera seem to be considered by most motorists as an inconvenience and are rarely observed. Granted, all these motorists are not parishioners of the church, but during the time when students are being transported to and from school, before and after church services, and especially during special events, these infractions are numerous and very evident. It's not difficult to tell by watching the traffic when something is going on at the church. During high-traffic times, I've seen vehicles backed up on Crystal Lantern, at PCH, up and onto La Primavera, and they're not local residents. The next issue I'd like to address is the excessive use of street parking during services and special events. I realize parking in front of someone's home is open to anyone wishing to park, but many of these motorists are rude and disrespectful to the homeowners and their property. I can't tell you how many sprinkler heads I've had to replace over the years and how much ground cover has been trampled by the churchgoers parking in front of my house. The illegal parking by blocking driveways and using no parking sections of the street is also a big concern with minimal enforcement. We have virtually no traffic or parking enforcement in the City of Dana Point, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm sure the numerous out-of-towners who attend the church functions regularly are aware of this, or perhaps they just don't care and, you know, they don't have to live here. You know, the city could put parking, put restrictions on parking, making residents only parking. My question is why should we as residents have to be inconvenienced with these restrictions due to the irresponsibility of the church and the Dana Point Planning Commission for failing to ensure adequate parking on church grounds for any and all church functions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Clyde Latcher, followed by Mabel Garcia.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Clyde Locker, I am a Dana Point resident of fifty-five years, in the same house, Calle La Primavera and La Cresta. My wife and I are opposed to this expansion. My basic issues are the increased traffic and noise. Constant noise seven days a week, Monday through Friday from school, Saturday and Sunday from church traffic. This traffic alone impacts our streets. Expansion only adds to the problem. Should this expansion get approved, really if it's approved or not approved, I believe this is an answer to consider. Then, two-thirds of the cars coming from the parking lot should exit on Calle La Primavera towards Selva. And if you know the topography of that, it's a much easier route to go from Selva down to the, to the site rather than PCH back up through all the residents and up to the, up to the church. It should exist, this would relieve some of the impact on neighbors. If this project gets an approval, then all construction trucks should enter and leave on Selva, and again, not coming from PCH through the narrow roads and winding roads up to the site. Heavy traffic has resulted into what I, what is an environmental issue also, leaving a black dust on our home and outside. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Mabel Garcia, followed by Ron Kincaid, Ronna Kincaid.
Good evening, members of the Commission. Thank you for allowing me to speak before you tonight. My name is Mabel Garcia, and my husband and I live in the Dana Woods neighborhood in Dana Point. We are Dana Point residents since the eighties, have been actively involved with the church, and are among thousands of families who have contributed towards the Capitol Campaign to improve our campus. Saint Edward's theme for the Capitol Campaign is to love and serve, and I'd like to talk about what that means to us. My husband and I were married in the original church, night hall, almost thirty-two years ago, so you can say Saint Edward is where our love story became official. Our kids have also grown up involved in the church, both graduated from the parish school, and one is continuing his religious education in Washington DC as a Franciscan. As part of a parish that also loves our community, we believe making our campus more functional will allow us to better serve those in need. The proposed pastoral center will be a focal point for that love and service. Our ministries counsel families and couples, but lack available meeting rooms. Many of our clergy and staff can only use converted confession booths because the existing buildings don't have enough proper offices. We have bereavement counselors helping those who have just lost their loved ones, but can only do so in an elementary school classroom because of insufficient meeting space. Those are just a few reasons the pastoral center is desperately needed. This project will allow us to address the existing demands and meeting space for the people who are already here. Changes are necessary in our campus, and sometimes change can be a scary word for some, but by allowing the demolition of our old buildings and the construction of the pastoral center, your approval of this project can help deliver very meaningful benefits for the community we all love so much. I'm a registered civil engineer in the state of California, and I've seen many local projects move through the planning process. This project proposed by Saint Edward's is a very good one. Staff has determined that the project meets all of the city requirements, it does not require any variances, and it will not adversely impact the environment. Saint Edward has brought forward a good project. Thank you for your consideration and I hope you vote in favor of Saint Edward.
Thank you. Ronna Kincaid, followed by Bill Green.
Good evening, my name is Ronna Kincaid and I live at three-three-nine-four-eight, Calle La Primavera, with the other five houses that are directly underneath the church. I live right below the sanctuary, and I've lived there since, owned that property since two thousand. And in two thousand and for several years, my late husband and I loved living there. The church was much, had much smaller membership then, it was very pleasant to live there. And as the church has grown and grown and grown, the problems keep coming and coming and coming. And don't ask me why, now that there are so many more members, that parents aren't watching their children and we're all in danger of being hurt, including my, I've heard the other stories, my five-year-old grandson who was almost clobbered with big rocks thrown from up above. So I know that Andrea Mueller has asked for an eight-foot fence and I know that's not in the plan, but I think right now, before construction or demolition or any of that begins, the church should put up a six-foot glass wall that extends all the way across the back of the property and around of the church and gives us some protection. And that's part of that plan, but I think that should come before anything else happens. The other thing that I'm concerned about that we haven't talked about are, are specific homes. We are right underneath the church and we, I know that surveys were done about the condition of the land that the church sits on, but I don't think they have done studies of the hill that comes down to our property, and I don't think we're safe from damage, from construction. I would like that to be added as a requirement before any, but any building can go. I don't think our hillside can take all that pounding and pounding and pounding for two to three years of work. The other thing I would like to tell you is that we all plan on videotaping the interiors and exteriors of our homes and the entire property because I do not think we will be without damage during that period. And I would think any of the close neighbors, you're going to have damage to your homes. This is a huge project, and it, not only the noise, it is going to be pounding and pounding and pounding for a very long time. Lastly, I thought this was going to be brought up at the beginning, but I'd like to know if any council members or Planning Commission members who are parishioners of the church plan on recusing themselves from voting because it's a big conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bill Green, followed by Sean Patrick.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Bill Green. I live in the Lantern District, and we moved to Dana Point not that long ago, for, while we bought our home there in two thousand and ten. And that was, the reason was, when I came to Saint Edward's, it's truly a beacon on the hill, and it's just a wonderful place of worship, and it's probably one of the deciding factors I came to Dana Point. But I'm very excited to be here, to hear the plans be implemented by the church, and I know many of our neighbors are here in support of it as well. Saint Edward's is an important part of the fabric of the community. Over the years, the church has hosted the Dana Point Symphony, as well as other many local events. In that sense, Saint Edward's has helped build community for all of us who call Dana Point our home. The churches has numerous groups, and we call them the church ministries, who serve the coastal parish community and are active in our community at large in so many ways. We have groups who are supportive of our military, they prepare the care and, care and comfort packages that are sent to the military in the war zones. We have groups that make quilts, blankets for our children at Chalk's Hospital, as well as Saddleback Hospital and in the shelters. We have other groups that are used in the kitchens, I think it was mentioned previously, for the poor and the needy in Mexico. In our Knights of Columbus, I happen to be a member, participate and, and support all the community and civic events, and we're, as you know, at the city, we're at the, many of the functions that the city has. These are just a few examples of our ministries, and as you can see, for many of our parishioners being involved at Saint Edward's is purely, it's a lot more than just going to mass on Sunday. So I say, my real purpose to explain that our groups need the adequate space and facilities to do their work, which directly benefits the folks of our community. The existing building serves, has been serving us for decades, but it's old, tired, and it's time to modernize it. And these, these improvements will, in, better the environment, they'll help in our energy efficiency, build modern safety and seismic standards, and they, be much, and it will be much quieter to address some of the comments we've heard this evening. These kinds of improvements should be what our community wants and deserves, and we ask you for your approval of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sean Patrick.
Good evening and thank you, Planning Commissioners, for the chance to speak on behalf of Saint Edward's. My name is Sean Patrick, I live at two-five-zero-eight-one, Perch Drive, Dana Point. My wife and I have lived there for going on eighteen years. Along with thousands of other Dana Point residents and business owners, I attend Saint Edward's regularly for services, participate in church ministries, and all three of our children have attended the school. Pastoral Center is so important to the mission of the church. The center will enable us to serve our community more effectively, efficiently, and to be better neighbors. Our ministries play a valuable role in the community, and we do not think it is too much to ask to have a comfortable space to gather in. Meeting space in the new center would be more efficiently divisible, allowing ministry groups to, adequate space for their meetings and give us flexibility to arrange meetings so that they do not interfere with peak times or activities. This essentially means that our small groups would not have to gain access to the school, search for a classroom in the school to meet, disrupt a teacher's learning space for the meeting, and then have to put everything back as it was. It may have already been mentioned, but right now it gets warm during functions at night hall because the building is old and doesn't have air conditioning. This makes it hard to contain some of the noise because the doors and windows end up being opened. Retrofitting the biz, the building is not an option. It's almost fifty years old and was built as a temporary facility in the first place. As highlighted in the staff report, the pastoral center plans include extensive sound reduction measures in its design, which will actually benefit the neighborhood and reduce ambient noise. I object to the notion offered by a handful of naysayers that Saint Edward's aims to build a convention center or a megachurch with this project. In fact, what's most striking about the pastoral center proposed is just how little new space is being added to the overall campus and how efficient the building will be. The City of Dana Point is in the process of creating world-class shopping and entertainment district and a world-class harbor. We believe our facility should be world-class as well and be a tribute to the character of our city. The project features top-notch architecture, a design that is sensitive to the, to its surroundings, and does not adversely affect our environment. I appreciate the role this commission is in making great projects in Dana Point and even, even better, and encourage your support of the Saint Edward's project. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have- And I don't have any other speaker cards, so there's other speakers that have not turned into slip.
Commissioners, if I may, I didn't include this at the end of our presentation, but we didn't fill out speaker slips for all the members in support of the project that are here. And just by raising hands, how many parishioners or other supporters of the project are here? Could you please do that? Thank you.
All right, thank you. And at this time, we will plow, close the public comment and we will take a break for about 15 minutes or, so you can go out there and stretch your legs. I'm sure some of you need it. And we will see you back here. Thank you.
To be clear, that means we're going to resume at 8:10.
All right, welcome back and good evening to any others who have joined us. We are now going into the open planning commissioner discussion amongst the five of us. So I will begin with, who would like to go first?
Our charge is to determine if the project complies with all the applicable development standards and to listen to the public and to determine if there are any mitigating issues that should be addressed. What I heard tonight, there are issues with parking, traffic, noise, and safety. I think that the, the project is a, is an improvement. It's going to improve the efficiency of the operation of the church and I think it's going to be a benefit to a majority of the, of the parishioners. However, I, I do have a concern about the safety and I would consider a condition of approval that the, that the church provides some mitigating fencing or some way to eliminate the, the threat to the, to the neighbors of projectiles being sent from the property. Other than that, I'm, I'm supportive of the project.
I do have a couple, I want to have a couple of questions here for staff. One second here, apologize. There is a question brought up, Sean, maybe you can help me or the city engineer, maybe Brandon, you can help me with this, relative to the hillside and slope stability issues and concerns of safety. What are, what do we do? What are our requirements? What happens or what has happened and what would happen if the project went forward in regards to that?
Yes, city has reviewed the geotechnical report for the project and the report has characterized this slope that descends from the southern part of the property down to the residences back there is a fill overcut slope. So roughly 15 feet of fill below the church site and then the rest of the slope below that is bedrock. The report has opined that the hillside is grossly stable. The reports that were done for the residences below, which were developed in the late 80s, early 90s, further opined that the slope was stable. So we don't feel that there's a stability issue with that slope.
Okay, but if they're doing work, is there, so there's testing, soil testing that occurs as part of the process to ensure?
Oh, absolutely. The geotechnical report has further given them a slope setback for all foundations so they won't be constructing immediately on the slope.
Okay.
You know, other than that, it'd be standard construction practices, but there's nothing that's out of the ordinary that's been advertised so far.
Okay, so would you say this is similar to some of the hill, the top of slope projects we see throughout, you know, the hilly?
Yes, what's been described to date is, would be standard construction practices, nothing unusual.
Got it. Okay, thanks. And then Sean, on the air quality discussion, there was issues raised about particulate matter and did we do any review? I know there was a comment in the staff report about doing an air quality analysis and what was done?
Yes, sir. So as standard practice to ensure that there is no impacts associated with the air quality with, associated with both the demolition, construction, and operations of the proposed project, a, the CALIMOD model provided by AQMD, which is utilized statewide for air quality modeling, looks at all particulate matter as well as greenhouse gases. And based on the proposal and the addition of the 11,000-plus square feet, all of the thresholds, both in terms of construction and operational, were well below thresholds and additionally, all typical standard construction procedures would be followed, similar to any other project associated with abatement of any asbestos and other potential hazard materials.
Could I just add? I, I think one thing that's important to clarify is prior to the issuance of any building permit, any project has to go through the air quality management district. They're required to mitigate any asbestos-led hazards on-site before any demolition is completed. And then there's other best management practices that are done once the demolition is underway.
So you're saying that if there's material in or on the building that is environmentally, that's toxic, they have to remove that before they can just do a wholesale demo?
That's correct. And they provide actual lab results to the air quality management district to, to document that that's happened. And if air quality feels like additional monitoring needs to take place, that was one of the questions that came up regarding monitoring, they could require that of the permutee.
Okay. And so that, and that, is that part of our standard condition?
Correct. It's standard practice before we issue a demolition permit.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to add that condition?
That's correct.
It's automatic, okay.
It's automatic.
And then, street signs, there's, there's a lot of those A-frame signs on the street. Those are old conditions or what are those?
Yes, sir. So that's a component of the 2000 approval of actually associated with the church in the back portion of the parking lot that was developed at that time, that they were to provide A-frame signage directing parishioners to slow down and to park inside of the, the, on the parking lot and not on the streets. And so they have provided that and those are required in perpetuity despite this, despite what happens here this evening. That's a requirement upon them.
Okay, so we, that's a condition of the old CUP?
Yes, sir.
Which is, so they stay no matter what we do here?
Yes, sir.
So there's no permanent fix there other than to just continue to put those signs out? And I know that's just a simple fix, right? Because you're talking about?
Yeah.
People behaving?
I mean, the current condi, condition is specific to A-frame signage, the locations and the number. I think that is something that's conditioned to be approved by the city, so there's some flexibility, I guess in the number and frequency. And then obviously, if A-frames were not the desire of the commission moving forward or other alternatives, that's definitely within your purview.
And then on the noise, did I know if the noise engineers are here relative to the low-frequency discussion that was occurring if?
I believe the applicant has their noise represented, their noise acoustic engineer available for any questions.
Okay. So I guess the, the simple question is noise attenuation relative to low-frequency, the booming? And does the construction of the new building address that in any way or, you know, we're not noise experts here, so if you could help us with that, that'd be nice.
Let's go ahead and reopen the public hearing for this part.
Okay.
High advanced brochures without debris.
Hold on one second.
We will reopen the public hearing, thank you.
Okay. High advanced brochures without debris. The, what we did was taking certain sound levels in, assumed to be inside the, the facility, we split that, the A, what's called the A-weighted sound levels into different octave band frequencies. And the way your hearing works is, hearing is less sensitive at low frequencies. So there's, when something is, is considered A-weighted, there's an attenuation factor at low frequencies. We took that sound level, pushed it through the building envelope, and then calculated the attenuation over distance. There's the inverse square law, attenuation over distance. So that's all factored into the calculations.
Okay, so that, to me, is a lot of science and I got, I got lost when you said attenuation. So can you, and easily understandable, when you say, do you, do you mean the noise doesn't travel further or?
So.
You don't hear it or do you feel it?
Again, sound behaves differently at different frequencies. It's harder to contain low frequencies inside of a building. That's why you hear low frequencies travel through things. So we, the building does have, you know, low-frequency attenuation, so it's the amount of a sound that's, or the amount of low-frequency drop-off, if you will, through the building shell itself. So those were all taken into account.
Okay, so at the property line, that's gone, that's below the 55 dB requirement?
Yeah, so what did we do is we take it, look at the, the data at all the different frequencies as it goes from the source all the way to the property line and then combine it back into the A-weighted levels. And then, and again, it's, it's below the, the requirement.
Got it, okay. When you say we, is this done like through computer programs?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's, there's a methodology to it that?
That's correct.
It's been used over time that it works?
That's correct. Yeah, it's industry standards and practices.
Okay, thank you. And then Sean, on that note, so do we have condi, okay, close the public hearing? As it relates to conditions, what are our conditions relative to testing the, the noise? So I know in some projects, after the projects are built, they have to do sound tests where they have amplified noise internal, or they have to measure the noise on the inside of the building. In this case, would you measure the noise on the outside of the building? Do we have a condition for that?
We do not as currently written. We just have conditions that we've crafted to regarding the doors, windows, things of that nature, hours. But that's definitely something within the purview of the planning commission this evening, should you wish to add it.
Okay. All right, those are my only comments or questions at this point. I mean, I, I would agree in, in sentiment to Commissioner Donner that there's issues here. I think there's a number of big issues here. Some of them appear to be historical in nature. Some are real felt issues in the community that I think as a commission, we have an opportunity here to, to listen and potentially make changes, suggest changes or conditions that address those issues. So I'm not opposed to moving forward with this project approval with us addressing those issues. And my list is traffic safety, noise, air quality, though I think, I'm going to cross that off because I believe that, that CALIMOD study addressed that as well as the AQMD The impact to safety relative to the neighborhood below as well as the impacts of the events on those, on that neighborhood. So those things I think we have to address going forward, but I think all of those can be done with conditions and minor changes to the project. That's my opinion and I can elaborate if we get to some consensus that we want to do something tonight.
I have a few follow-on questions. Well, I should say that I found tonight very interesting and I've heard things that I never thought I would hear, such as I didn't realize there was such a significant safety issue and concern in so many projectiles leaving St. Edwards. I never would have guessed that coming into night. And I think it sounds to me, I mean, there was a lot of passion and it was repetitive regarding that issue. So I think we need to address that issue. Relative to that, I heard suggestions of a, you know, six-to-eight-foot glass fence. Sean, do you have, you know, could you speak around, if we wanted to make a, a condition around that? I mean, six-foot fence, eight-foot fence, materials, do you have any suggestions in that regard?
Six-foot high fence is standard and it's allowed by right and would, could easily be accomplished by a condition of approval. If it's the desire of the planning commission, the suggestion was the, the glass, was the glass tempered fence along the property line is what I heard, but obviously, any type of material is at the discretion of the planning commission.
Okay. I was thinking in my mind, maybe if we, assuming, my understanding is that the property line is at the top of slope approximately, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so I was thinking, maybe if we had a landscape buffer from the PL, set the, set, condition the fence, let's say five feet back from that, and then have another five-foot landscape buffer between the pastoral center and the fence so that people couldn't get right up at the fence. That's kind of what I was thinking. Do you see any problems with, you know, requesting a condition like that?
So, to be clear, your thought that you had there was that it would be five-foot buffer from the property line and then the fence and then an additional five-foot buffer?
Yeah.
I would say that the only concern that I would see is maintenance and wanting to not create a situation where landscaping was not maintained. And so, because that's, might be with a six-foot high fence, if that's what the planning commission is considering, it might be easier to push the fence closer to the property line and have that buffer on then the other side of the fence just for the sheer purposes of, of maintenance long-term and care.
I, I would, just for the benefit of my fellow commissioners, I would be supportive of, of a, relative to this discussion, a six-foot high tempered glass fence at the top of slope on, on the PL approximately, or on the church's side of it with a 10-foot buffer of landscaping in front of it that's thickly vegetated so that people aren't, you know, creating paths to get right up to the fence. And I, I, I've looked at the site plan and it looks like there might be some pinch points where kind of structures get too close to that. So at those locations, I would suggest that we, you know, leave it to staff to work out with the applicant relative with the thought and intent of, of what's in mind here. I'd also like to add a condition that no benches within 20 feet of the property line. And I'd also like to make sure and ensure that there's no rocks integrated in the landscaping at all, there's no gravel, and that if there are any existing places like that on-site, that those be removed and swapped out for something different. So I would be supportive of those types of conditions. And I'm open to other suggested conditions to address some of these other issues. That's my comments for now.
I, I agree, obviously, this, this is a very good project and I think it's well-suited for the neighborhood with some particular issues to be, to look, you know, looked at a little more carefully. Uh, because we are, in essence, we're taking entire neighborhoods right now and sort of starting to mold a little of this together as these changes are made. So it, I'm in, at this point, I would wait for any further suggestions as we go along during this process. this process.
All right, I think my fellow commissioners have already touched on a lot of the items that I had listed here with respect to the traffic, parking, air pollution, noise, the fence, the benches. So a lot of those have already been discussed, so I'm not going to continue on that. But overall, I think that the project is a great project. It consolidates a lot of the existing buildings into a single building that's cohesive and complementary to the existing sanctuary facility and would be in support of it with respect to adding some of the conditions that have been discussed.
All right, commissioners have anything else?
Yes, I missed a couple of my thoughts. For staff, relative, and there were some mismentioned in the verbal comments, but also in the written comments or, you know, letters that were provided about the short notice afforded to the public to review this. Was it, was this extra short? Was, was there a failure to get something out on time, or, or why was the notice sent when it was?
The notice was completed. It was sent and postdated the Wednesday and sent out at that point, which would have been 12 days prior to the public hearing pursuant to the municipal code section, which I, or Dana Point zoning code section, which I brought up earlier. It's in, within, it exceeds the 10 day minimum of sending out those notices. And so, in terms of notification and the process, and again, similar with past projects that are larger in scale than this one, it's been actually noticed further ahead than the required minimum 10 day sending those notices. In addition, staff, in addition, the applicant provided more than the 500 foot noticing radius. They provided a 1,200 foot radius, which resulted in 2,100 mailers that went out for this project. So, and then the, the project staff report and applicable, and applicable attachments went out on Wednesday as typical and as is fashioned, and was provided to members of the public at the same time as to the planning commission as well as to the applicant. So in terms of that, all standard practices were followed and/or exceeded zoning code requirements.
Okay, thank you. Well, for the benefit of my fellow commissioners, I think that on a, on a project that is either a certain scale or of some kind of known or suspected level of controversy, I think we should consider a longer period for the public to review, have materials and review them. Because I agree, it's a, it's a very voluminous amount of information and, and it's, I just think in an issue of fairness, in the future, we should consider having a different policy relative to, you know, larger or controversial projects. And then another thing I wanted to mention was that I heard a lot of testimony tonight relative to how bad the traffic is and how rude the drivers are. And I don't think that rude drivers are, are solely going to St. Edwards. They seem to be everywhere. The, it, you know, relative to Commissioner Nelson, we have an opportunity to see what we can do and see how we can tinker with that, but the pastoral center, based on the traffic analysis that was done, they don't perceive that to be generating a lot of significant new traffic at the peak times. So that's a, that's an existing issue that is not affected per se by the pastoral center. So with that, I'll be quiet.
I do have one other question, I apologize, Chairwoman. Sean, going back to an earlier discussion about the old CUP, there was a comment letter that we received, and I think there were comments tonight about a old mitigation measure, some requirement to widen and add turn lanes. Do we have any information on that? I know that you had sent, I'd asked about it, you'd sent an old report, a traffic report, basically summarizing the changes that were made.
Yes, sir. So as noted earlier, all of the previous conditional approval and requirements that were placed on all the, the previous entitlements is still in and of, in and in effect despite what happens and occurs this evening. In terms of past approvals and improvements that were required, as stated previously, as a component of this project, we did evaluate those requirements, and as stated, there was a number of actions that the applicant took to be back in conformance with that. A component of things that weren't necessarily a part of that, but in the past, was street improvements, off-site improvements that were associated with the last expansion back in 2000 that was approved by planning commission. And so there were a number of improvements and street improvements to address circulation, traffic, and other items that were brought up, as you stated, in the traffic study that was completed post, post the hearing and post approval, and that was reviewed and approved by the city council at the time back in 2002, 2003. And so all of that work, per that direction, was completed, and staff confirmed that with the engineering division in terms of intent, and that was all completed, yes, sir, in compliance with those requirements.
Okay. And have we looked at any widening here? I mean, is it even, does it, maybe you, Rich, you can answer this question relative to what it takes to add a lane or a turn pocket for a project like this?
Relative to adding a lane along a residential street, that could happen a couple of ways. Take away street parking or keep street parking and widen along the frontage, which obviously would affect the property. In terms of added turn lanes at intersections, you could see that, again, would, it would effectively reduce or eliminate on-street parking. If you're gonna try and squeeze in the left turn lane or right turn lane, you're not gonna be able to move any curb, given all the development that's adjacent to the site on primavera.
Okay, but, but, so I guess more specifically, with this project, or the traffic numbers suggest that that's something that we need?
No, it's not.
Okay, so there's no warrant, you know, I think, what do they call them, traffic warrants or something?
No.
To get there, okay. All right, that is all that I have question wise. Thank you.
Yeah, I have one comment. There was a question earlier about whether or not any of the members of the council, the planning commission, were members of the church, and our council did a survey before the, the meeting to make sure that there was no conflict of interest here, just to make sure that everyone understands that.
All right. Is there a call for the vote? Is there a motion to be made first?
So I will do my best here to kind of try to summarize at least the things that I would want to see to move this thing forward. I'd get your pen out, Sean and Jennifer. And again, I'm coming from the mindset of, you know, doing nothing helps really nobody. I don't think we can sit up here and say that our job, denying a project that gives us essentially another bite at the apple to condition and limit and control what happens on that property, to ensure that the church does what they're supposed to do. Obviously, there's some historical relationship issues that, that come with this, and, you know, I don't want to get in the middle of those, but what I do think we can do is address some of those with safety issues and conditions. So I'm gonna, I'm coming from that perspective. I do agree, though, I mean, I think the consolidation of these buildings from three or four, five buildings, I don't know how many there are, I don't need to count them, is, is a benefit. We're, we're reducing down the footprint of those structures. We're taking a building that has to open its windows during the, the heat of the summer to try to cool off. I have to deal with that in my own house. I live in the neighborhood in the Land District, and I don't have an air conditioner, and it gets pretty bad. And so I can only imagine what it's like inside a building, of people doing what they do there. So, the suggestions that I would have is, A, we add a condition that the city engineer works with the applicant to, and really kind of tear enough of Chairman, or Commissioner McCann's comment. Sounds like we have some really erratic, unfriendly drivers. And, you know, I don't know how we as a commission can address courtesy, but what I think works, what I've seen work is alert signs, so the flashing sign that says, "Slow down, you're going too fast." I don't, I don't know if we even have signs on the street, but I, but if there's a school zone here, I would assume we've got some type of a school notice. Whatever can be done relative to signage, real thick signage, and if it's a flashing light, even better, if it can be done, I would have want that added. I don't know if it can be done, so, and I don't know if we've done a study, but I wouldn't want to delay the, the approval. So what I, my condition would be is that if it's something that can be done, it's done. That we require a post-construction noise survey to verify the adequacy of the construction of the building with and without an event, including a typical sound, whatever sound system they use, DJ system, I'm not sure how, how the events go there, but I would want to know that this new building does what the noise study says it's gonna do and not hope that it does that. And so we would do that through a post-survey and prior to occupancy. I'm in complete alignment with a wall on the property line, I think a six foot plexi or other see-through walls appropriate with a, a human unfriendly landscape buffer so that you can't walk up to that fence. I think anybody that has a house that has people peering down into it, whether we regulate or don't regulate views, we can regulate effects, and I wouldn't want someone walking up to a fence line and looking down at my yard, even if I knew that that church was there. And I think, as I said earlier, given that we have the opportunity to work with a project, now we should add these types of effects, and if there's kids throwing rocks over, hopefully a wall will help. I would add that we remove the accordion door on room seven, which is along that, that corner southern edge. It's one door, I think the rest of them make sense, they open into a reception area that moves further back from that bluff top and further away from the residence. And, I think that was it. Yeah, and I'm, I am, I agree that we don't want to arm these kids, or whoever's doing it, it's probably drunk adults for all I know, but we don't want to give them the ammunition that they're using currently. So I would, I'm absolutely okay with including that as part of the condition on the landscape. I'm okay with the seating being set away from the landscape bluff top, 20 feet, I think is what you said. I think it's already there, but we need to codify that, I agree. And those would be the things that I would need to see changed to move this forward tonight.
What width landscaping buffer do you think is appropriate?
I think, I mean, 10 feet plus a plexi wall seems appropriate. Plus, there's a pinch point on that corner, southwest corner. I don't know if you can even get, I don't know what the, it's 14 foot to the PL it looks like, so you're gonna be pushing it to get any more than 10 on that corner.
Well, and I was okay with the pinch points for, you know, leave it to the director's discretion to work out with the applicant. I think they, you know, heard our concerns and the concerns of the community and, and be sensitive to what's there.
Okay, let me just look at their landscape plan real quick, sorry.
No, my suggestion was 10.
Yeah, no, 10, I'm fine with that.
But, but I'm just saying, wherever there's a pinch point.
Oh, if it reduces?
If it reduces, it's okay to reduce if they work it out with the Director of Community Development, if they, you know, kind of look at, okay, at this pinch point, we can only do seven and a three foot walkway, or, I don't know what it might be, but let them work out the details.
That's fine. I think the plan does that already, but, so I'm comfortable with 10 feet. So that was a motion.
That was a motion. It's true.
I guess I'd like to second it, but before I do, I want to mention and suggest to the leadership of the parish that it sounds like, well, first of all, I never really got to give my thoughts on the, on the project. I do think it's a great project, and it sounds like there's a lot of good things going on at the church, which we greatly appreciate. And the, the community as a whole benefits from it. It sounds like there's some opportunity for better education for schoolgoers, the parents of schoolgoers maybe, for, you know, people who are on the grounds and things like that to, to be better neighbors. So I would strongly encourage you to, you know, be proactive about outreach in that regard and try and emphasize to people who are utilizing your facility to be better neighbors, be sympathetic, let people pull out of their driveways and those types of things. With that being said, I would second the motion that Commissioner Nelson made with his suggested conditions of approval.
Right. Would you prefer a hand vote or I vote?
Do we want to have everybody weigh in on this before we take a vote, just to make sure we're, I mean, I'm, I'm open to other items, changes, suggestions. I don't want this to be just what I want, so if there's other comments, I would want to make sure we're having the discussion before we move it to a vote.
Can the public ask a question for clarification?
No, typically, we don't have an engagement with the, with the public, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the only other thing that I was thinking when you mentioned that, Sean, was that some of the churches I know have volunteers that go out when there's the peak traffic time and people getting out, and hold traffic up so that the residents can get out, and that may be a suggestion that the church would consider.
So when we're ready to vote, I'm gonna actually ask Lauren to do a roll call vote for us, so that way we have a clear record.
Any more comments? And we are ready for the vote.
I'm not familiar with that process, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it'd be helpful to have the, have it read back, and then we can vote, just so we know what we're voting on.
I'm gonna try to read back your motion. We'll see if I get it right. So the motion would be to approve staff recommendation with, I have a list of six additional conditions of approval. The first condition of approval would be for the city engineer to work with the applicant to develop additional signage, potentially alert signage, if that is possible. The second condition of approval would be to require a post-construction noise survey with and without an event to determine if the project is within the city's noise ordinance, and those studies are to take, to be taken prior to occupancy. The third additional condition of approval would be the addition of a six foot tall plexi or glass wall located approximately upon the property line with an approximate 10 foot landscape buffer meant to discourage human travel through the landscape. In the event that the applicant is not able to provide a 10 foot buffer, the applicant and the Director of Community Development shall work together to determine an appropriate landscape buffer. The fourth additional condition of approval would be to remove the accordion door on room seven. The fifth additional condition of approval would be to remove the rocks and gravel from the property and replace with a different landscape coverage. The sixth additional condition of approval, and the last condition of approval, would be to remove or to ensure that all benches are set back from the bluff top at least 20 feet. Did I cover them all?
Good job.
Yes, good job, thank you.
All right.
Sorry, I'll call the vote. Commissioner Obol?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Donner?
Aye.
Commissioner McCann?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Chair Murphy?
Yes.
That passes 5-0.
Yes. Thank you all very much for coming. I know it's, it's a late date, and we appreciate the input, and we would continue trying to do these kinds of, of get-togethers again very soon.
Excuse me, we still have a meeting in session, so if you guys would like to talk, if you could move outside, we can wrap everything up and we can go home, too. Thank you.
All right, moving on to old business. There is no old business. Moving on to new business, there is no new business. Now to staff reports.
I don't have anything to report this evening. Obviously, our normal scheduled meeting will be back at the council chambers, but that's all I have for this evening. And that's on the 10th, next Monday.
Yes, that is correct.
And we do have items on the agenda.
Okay, good to know. And then we move to commissioner comments.
I didn't get to make the event today at the park, but I did see that the Hobe sculpture finally got in there, so it looked absolutely amazing. So, great job. I know you guys won an APA award for your partnership with the development team, and it's really a nice drive-in now, and it's not un, I'm not sure what Sunset Magazine said, was unceremonious entrance to PCH. I think we now have a more ceremonious entrance, so, good job on that.
Any other comments?
I, I was at the ceremony today, and I, I echo Commissioner Nelson's words. I thought it was an excellent job, and the whole community is going to be proud of, of that. And also, I concur with Commissioner McCann. I think that controversial projects need a little more lead time for the public and for the staff. Thanks.
I didn't make it to the Hobe thing today, I wanted to, but, but it's, it's super exciting to see that Linear Park at PCH coming in down there. It's, it's, it's really looking great, so I'm sure it looks even better with the statue now. But I don't know if anybody's been down by the harbor yet, but the harbor lights look amazing, super great, so I'd strongly encourage people to go to that. And that's it. Thank you.
I think, I would just like to add that, as true it is every year, we are getting terrific sunsets again up near Pines Park. And it's always just a great display. Unfortunately, we have lost a lot of, some of the ground-level sand down at Kepel Beach, so that's, it looks like it's going to be a big issue for a while. But that's Mother Nature, so not much we can do. So, thank you all very much for being here. Thank you to staff. We appreciate it. And have a good night, and we'll see you very soon.
Hammer.
Oh, yeah.
We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.